Okay, good evening, everyone. Randy, do we still have people coming in?
A few, but not very many. They're still, they're gonna keep coming in, I suspect.
So we'll go on and get started tonight. I want to thank everyone for coming out and joining us for this special meeting to talk about the civic core with the various agencies that are going to be involved in that process. Thank you, agencies, DEMPED, DC Library, DPR for putting this together for the community to give us the overview of your timeline on this project. And thanks to commissioners for making time. My name is Lisa Boer, I'm Chair of ANC 34G. And before we get started tonight, I want to have the commission introduce themselves. I start out, I'm the single-member district commissioner for ANC 34G01, which is all of Hawthorne and portions of Barnaby Woods. My single-member district runs from Western Avenue past Pinehurst Circle to Upland, back over towards Utah and Tennyson area, swings back over Beach Street, always get that one mixed up, and goes down to Oregon and back up to the corner of Western. Randy Speck, you want to introduce yourself?
Sure, I'm Randy Speck. I represent the single-member district ANC 34G03. That's basically the area between Nebraska, Utah, and Broad Branch. And I'm glad to see everyone here tonight.
Peter Goslin?
Yeah, I'm Peter Goslin. I represent District 6, which is the west side of Connecticut, back to 41st now. January 1st, 42nd Street, between Western Avenue and the Chevy Chase Circle and Military Road, with a peninsula to the east going to Nevada between Military and Legation.
We all have to struggle to remember all the things.
The redistricting has really left me confused, so. I've been like, I've been canvassing and like handing out flyers in the wrong places, so it's.
Connie Chang?
Hello, good evening. I'm Commissioner Chang, and I am the Commissioner for our single-member district 05, which begins on Legation, on the east side of Connecticut, where there's the Chase Bank and then the Chevy Chase Library Community Center. Civic Core is in my district, all the way up to the circle and back down Broad Branch Road. And I have the same thing Peter has, which is like a little peninsula. That's between Nevada, Chevy Chase Parkway, that goes down to Justin.
Chad Potwell? You're on mute, Chad.
I'm Charles Cadwell. I'm the Commissioner from District, Single Member District 34G07, which is roughly a triangle between Reno, Military, Nebraska, a little bit of Nevada, I guess, not quite a triangle. But anyway, I'm glad we're having this event. We're moving ahead with what we worked so hard on last year.
Yes, thank you. Michael Zeldin?
I'm Michael Zeldin. I am G04, which is Lafayette Elementary, right there at North Hampton, then Broad Branch, Western part of Utah, part of Upton. And I'm not sure where it changes in January, but that's the heart of it.
Thank you. And John Higgins? You're on mute, John.
Yeah, I know, I got it. I'm John Higgins. I'm the single-member district for District 02. Roughly that goes from Oregon on the east to Utah on the west, from Military Road on the south, up to Beach on the north. And Michael Zeldin, the speed table is in, and my son's block in front of his house.
They pay on Tennyson?
Yep, on Tennyson.
Oh, great. Do we know when they're going to get rid of that curve that takes you to 32nd Street across?
I don't know. The triangle? I don't know. Have to check.
Oh, good. All right, well, that's, that's, that's a big accomplishment for you, John. And I'm happy that we were able to accommodate it because many, many people in the community were asking about slowing traffic down on Tennyson all the way down to Oregon.
I think our collective, our collective great weight had a lot to do with that.
Well, it's quite a team.
Okay. Sorry to interrupt you guys. But, uh, so just to remind everyone tonight that our video, we are recording. And in the special agenda, we do have some meeting procedures, so we'll just try to keep everything cordial. Make sure if you have a question posted in the Q and A, that's the easiest place for us to see it, as well as our panelists to see it. Sometimes when things are put in the chat, it takes us a little bit to kind of parse out questions. So chat, if you would reserve it for just, you know, generalized conversation, but you have a specific question, go on and post that in the Q and A. We will have time for community feedback. And you can also raise your hand, and we'll get to as many folks as we can that have questions. So at this time, I will turn it over to Randy Speck, who has been working on this and who put this meeting together.
Hey, we're glad to have everybody here to talk about the civic core. As I think probably everyone on the call recognizes, we've been working on this for a number of years. And it's now come to a point where we're actually going to start planning it in detail. Tonight's meeting is focusing really just on the procedural aspects and the schedule, how we're going to work things out going forward. So we're not going to be talking really about the substance of what's going to be in the community center, the library, and housing. But we're rather going to be focusing on how we're going to decide what's going to be in those components. And so we're very happy to have tonight representatives from the library. The Director, Rick Reyes-Gavilan, is here. And then from, from DEMPED, the Deputy Mayor's Office, we have Gilles Stoker. And from DPR, Brent Cisco. Brent, you're the only one from DPR, is that right?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Okay, all right. And I know the three of you, your three organizations have been talking together about how to proceed with this. There is money in the FY 2023 budget for the beginning of the process with the community center and the library. And we want to talk about how that's going to proceed. And then we want to talk about what the schedule is going to be for how we're going to approach this. And then maybe as well, talk about the elements of what's going to be included in a request for proposal. So I don't know who wants to begin. Gilles, you're going to take the lead?
That'd be good. I think my colleague Saroche Alpadwala may be on the call as well. Do you see him in the gallery by chance?
Okay.
Elevate him to a presenter.
Okay, who is it that we're looking for?
Saroche Alpadwala. He may be calling in if he is.
We don't see it here.
That's okay. He's not here, so it's okay.
Okay, yeah, I did send us a panelist invitation as well, but, okay.
It's okay. All right. I'll start with, just if I could, just a brief introduction. Some folks here, I've not met you before. I've been with the city for about 15 years. Started off as the housing provider ombudsman for the city, and then worked on the inclusionary zoning program, as well as the affordable dwelling unit programs to get those processes started, and the inclusion zoning process started for the city. I've been with the Deputy Mayor's Office for six or seven years. I've worked on a number of large-scale projects. A few of the recent ones include the Franklin School, the McMillan Reservoir, as well as the Wharf. I'm very familiar with working with other agencies on projects, as well as working on projects that have a complex nature, both in their scope, timeline, funding sources, and diversity of interests in the community. So I'm pleased to be working with the ANC and the agencies on this RFP. We're contemplating having an RFP that would be joint between DEMPED, DCPL, and DPR for this site. I think it's the most economical way to proceed with the development. And, you know, it provides an opportunity for respondents to the RFP to look at ways in which they can incorporate the needs of the agencies and the community in the designs that they put forward. We work closely with our agency partners at the Office of Planning with a small area plan, and saw the work that was done there. It's very helpful for determining the future of this site. So the ANC has done a lot of work over many years. Largely, for those here, you know, Randy, I know you were very involved for many years as well. And that's very helpful to understand the community's interest in how this site is developed. So we're here, and also DEMPED, DPR, and DCPL have been working closely together over the last several months to make sure that we're familiar with each other's needs. We start looking at the space requirements that each of us have, because there's both a organizational need that the agencies will have, as well as a operational opportunity that each agency has. So we're trying to look at both those as we proceed forward. And agencies take the lead on what they need in their, in their facilities. DEMPED is facilitating that through the RFP. So Director Reyes, do you want to have any remarks on the DCPL?
Thanks, Gilles. Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here. I represent Chevy Chase Library, going up to Northwest DC, down south to the libraries in Washington Highlands, further west to the Palisades Library and Ward. That's, that's my bad joke, imitating an ANC member and their, and their boundaries. Anyway, you know, as Gilles said, DEMPED is taking the lead on something that is relatively new for us. Obviously, we have done mixed-use libraries in the past, but I'll say that this is the first opportunity for the library, I think, to take a more active and engaged role in the development of the library program. You know, we're really excited about the opportunity to have housing. I think one thing that you and I, Randy, have talked about over the years is how can we sort of look at the, the community centers program and the libraries program and see where there is room for, you know, how can we overlap that? Certainly, we don't want to have the exact same things and, and perhaps double up on things that the community center might have. So, so working with DPR and Director Hunter, I think we're going to look at sort of ways in which we might be able to save space to provide a new program. You know, we're, obviously, I think one thing that the community has to know is that we will not compromise on our program. Hopefully, we are not compromising on the civic importance of what libraries are, even as, as physical spaces. And I'm sure that we will, through the RFP process, bring in a phenomenal team, including great architects, who will be inspired by the beautiful libraries that we've built over the past 12 or so years here in DC, and, and, and take it from there.
Brent, you want to add, add anything?
Could I just interrupt a moment and just, to my fellow commissioners, there is a fire at 5333 Connecticut, and there, I may have to drop off to run up there. There seem to be five or six trucks. They haven't pulled hoses, so I'm not sure what's going on, but just FYI.
Okay, thank you. Hope it's nothing serious. Brent?
Okay, thanks, Commissioner. I hope it's not, I hope it's not too serious as well. I would just like to echo Director Reyes's comments about being excited about this project. And I guess I should introduce myself. For those that I haven't met, I think I've met most folks, but Brent Cisco, with DPR, I'm a Capital Products Officer. I started at DPR in 2008. I've been doing budgets all day. I think that's 14 years, but my math could be off at this point in the day. But, but super excited, you know, Commissioner, we worked together. It seems like forever ago, back before COVID, had actually a couple of community meetings, had great turnouts. You had given us some incredible feedback that you collected from the community. And, you know, the community wants and needs. I just want to add that since COVID, well, actually, since COVID started, DPR has embarked on our own master planning process called Ready to Play. And we've had word-by-word meetings, and we've been able to collect a lot of good information, too. And I think that information combined with what you've given us, combined with this great team, we're working together with DCPL and of course with Gilles at DEMPED. I have no doubt this is going to be an amazing project, and I'm just super excited about it. And thanks for having us tonight.
Welcome. You mentioned, Brent, that we have worked on the community center back before COVID, and I had actually gone to the point of issuing an RFP and beginning to work with an architect on a design. And in preparation for that, and Connie was involved with this extensively as well, although she was not a commissioner then, we did a lot of outreach to the community. We had a number of community meetings. We had a survey that I think we had close to 1,000 people who responded to the survey. And we got a lot of information from the community about what they were looking for in a community center. And I'm just wondering whether we need to now do something similar to that in preparation for an RFP going out here to reach out to the community, to perhaps do a survey, to see what the community, if there have been changes in the community's expectations, and now add into it the library and the housing component. Because those are things we haven't really reached out to the community in detail about before. We've done a lot of work with the community about those elements with regard to the small area plan. But now we're focusing particularly on the civic core. And I'm wondering what the three of you think we had, we should be doing now in terms of community engagement in this process as we move toward an RFP.
Sure, thanks, Fisher. I will just briefly say, I think maybe Gilles may, may have more to offer. But I do agree, I think, you know, you're giving us a lot of great information. I know that, you know, the world has changed a lot over the past three to four years. And in the scope of this project, it's changed a lot. So I do agree that some, some degree of, you know, a next step in sort of community engagement is very, would be, I think, be very helpful as the RFP is developed. But with that, Gilles, do you, would you like to speak any about the engagement moving forward?
Sure, absolutely. You know, community engagement is, is essential for this project. There'll be a couple of touchpoints that are part of the process that are standard for our projects. So let me go over that for folks who are not familiar with our normal RFP process. So we have a, as part of a process, we have a surplus public meeting, which, the purpose of that is to determine if public property should be used for any private or should be, should have a public use. So in this case, obviously, we would be wanting to retain the public uses, but also allow for a private use in that, in the housing element. So the, the surplus hearing would be strictly as to, should the property be maintained solely as a municipal use? Or should it be allowed for a private use on the site? And that's a standalone public meeting that's required under DC Law 10-801. We also have, when we, following the issuance of the RFP, we have another meeting, which is our disposition public meeting. That's a meeting where those individuals who have responded to the RFP will present to the community their ideas that are part of their response. And that's an opportunity for the community to look at the responses, ask the respondents specific questions about those responses. At that time, we usually ask the ANC to provide, as part of each of those responses, what elements do you like and what elements do you not like? They are seeing each of those responses. Not looking at the team specifically, but looking at the elements themselves. And then we go forward with the selection process. That's the standard process we have in all of our RFPs. Here, obviously, we have two municipal uses that will have a community engagement with that to determine, you know, what is best suited for their programs. And DEMPED is looking at DCPL and DPR to determine what those uses, what that program should look like, because it's their, their agencies who will be operating those resources. So the public engagement upfront will be important to facilitate the uses that will, in the end, be part of their program. But I'll let them pick. I don't want to take their, it's their lead to determine what they, what each agency would like to have in their facilities.
Sure, thanks. You know, as far as the library goes, considering how many new buildings we've built over the last decade or so, you know, we've got a pretty, pretty good process that we use in order to capture as much community input as possible. Obviously, in all those instances, we've been sort of going it alone as an independent agency. This is going to require a very sort of different approach. I don't think that we would necessarily be meeting with the public to talk about the library, especially if we've got synergies with the rec center, for example. And so, again, I think offline, we're going to talk to the rec center about, you know, what are the best ways for us to capture all the programmatic needs from the community for the, for the rec center and the library? And then, and then we would take it from there. Again, is, this is a very new process for us, because most of our other buildings have been standalone, where the library controls its own procurement. We hire our own architects, designers. In some cases, we even hire, you know, community engagement help. But in this case, it's just going to be more collaborative, and with collaboration might come sometimes a bit more confusion. But, but we are committed to being transparent and committed to getting as much engagement as possible. And again, we'll be doing that with, with our colleagues in, in, in district government, who are obviously the important stakeholders here as well.
Before we start going to questions, maybe if we could get some idea from you, Gilles, I think you're probably the person to talk to about this, but the timeline that you're thinking about. For when the RFP, you'd like to see the RFP go out, what process goes on before that? And then some timeline for when the RFP is going to be reviewed? And that community meeting that you mentioned, looking at the responses? And then when you anticipate there might be a selection?
Randy, I just want to jump in. I'm on the same page. I just have the question about this first thing that you mentioned, the surplus public meeting. It was a little confusing to me. Can you explain why that's necessary and what kind of examples might be, like a public, a public building that might be privately used? It wasn't clear to me. And, and then, of course, timeline and how long these processes are. Thank you.
Sure. So a good example would be if it's a school. So if, if the district wants to develop a school that's not necessary, or that we're looking at whether it's necessary for the community, we have a meeting to determine, is a school necessary in that community? And if we determine through council approval that the school is not necessary, then it can be used for another purpose. So that's the surplus process. Should it remain a municipal use as a school? Or is a school no longer necessary? So it can be turned into housing, for example. That's the purpose of the surplus process.
Okay, so for a community center and a library, they're not schools. They're, they're already public. So, so what examples would come up for these two buildings?
So what we'd be doing is we'd be surplusing a portion of the property to allow for housing.
Got it.
We're adding a use here.
Okay, then I have other questions later. Thank you so much.
Okay, sure. So we, we have the surplus meeting before we issue the RFP. So that'll happen first, the surplus meeting. Once we, we issue the RP, which we're hoping to be in early 2023, to allow for the community engagement this fall and winter, we would then issue the RFP, the timeline for responding to the RFP. Sometimes we have a little bit more of a longer response time if it's a more complex project, which just one would fit that bill. So we would look to a timeline that would allow teams to not only find, you know, partners, that would be the best partners to get the best result, but also to develop their concept plans internally to their team and put together the best response that they could. So we have, you know, a number of hopefully very compelling responses to the RFP.
So you're, there are 90 days for the response?
We've done 60, we've done 90. Sometimes if we have questions from respondents throughout the RFP process, we'll extend it further to allow for the full measure of time for folks to complete their responses. And we'll, and we'll, if we have respond, if we have questions to RFPs, we post the responses on our website, so all potential respondents can see those answers. And then once we, so once we have responses, we go through a selection process that's internal to the government. We have a multi-agency selection team, which would, in this case, include DCPL, DPR. We often have folks from the Department of Transportation, Department of the Environment, Office of Planning. We really want to have a broad group of district employees who have knowledge across areas that will affect the, the, the project so that we can have those different perspectives and bring that knowledge to bear when we look at selecting the team. So, once we get the responses that the selection committee is, is formed, we have then the second public meeting as part of our legal requirement, which we do, is the disposition public meeting. And that's when each respondent provides their presentation to the community. And the public is able to provide questions and receive answers to those responses. And then we ask, as part of that process, for the ANC to provide a resolution that would provide the elements that they like from the responses and the things they don't like. So sometimes we'll have, you know, respondents who will have no ideas. Maybe it's a, who knows what people put in. There's the options for levels of affordability. Maybe there's a thought about levels of affordability. Maybe respondent puts in, who knows, a short-term stay hotel. Who knows what they put in? But people are willing to, are free to provide whatever they want in their responses. If the ANC has a concern or a like about what they see, we'd like that to be part of a formal resolution that would be provided to the executive that would go into our official record and that we would give great weight to for purposes of making a selection. And then from that, we would ultimately make a selection for the, for the team. And that's when we start working with an individual team to proceed with advancing their concept designs through to, you know, through completion of the project. And that would be a multi-agency team that we would be working with a developer, because at that point, obviously, the DPR and DCPL would have real strong need to work with that developer closely to make sure that their program and operations are met within the project going forward. Does that answer your question, Randy?
Yeah, just roughly, would that mean that we've got a, an RFP that would come out in first quarter of 23? A response to the RFP, sometimes the second quarter of 2023? And then maybe the third quarter would be the selection process up through October or so. And then have a selection, hopefully, by the beginning of fiscal year 2024, which would be October.
Yeah, roughly that, that would be, you know, a general timeline, timeframe.
Okay. And then I've got one question that's, that's going to, I think, going to come up inevitably. And that is, we're going through this process in the first part of 2023, and we're not going to know then exactly what it is that we're going to have to finance. And how is that going to mesh with, for instance, the, the capital budget for 2024, which may or may not have the right amount of money in it? Because we will, will not have. Because we will and will not have finalized a uh, a scope for the project. And exactly what's going to be required. So how does this fit in with the, the budgeting process? Uh, that's going to be going on. I mean, as, as Brett mentioned, he's probably already wa- working on budget for twenty twenty-four.
We're talking about budget, let's talk more about briefly first about. What the building could potentially look like. Because there's an interesting question here about will it be a standalone? Municipal building that will include both DCPL and DPR? Will it be something where it's where the facility, public facilities are intermingled between with the housing where it's on the, for example, the first floor? And then the housing abo- above it, so depending on how the property is developed, that may affect the cost to construct it. Uh, but each agency, as we go through the selection process. Will, I would presume, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Director and Brent. Would be updating their budgets and we'd be working together to say, is this the appropriate uh amount of budget for what we're looking to produce? You know, also costs change for construction costs and labor, all those things we, we update them annually. On a five-year rolling basis.
Well, one thing that we were, we were concerned about and we continue to be concerned about, we're going to be looking at is, we don't want um. The housing to have to subsidize the library and the community center. They should stand alone in terms of financing and the district should. In our view. Su- supply the, 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 the right amount of money for the library and the community center, independent of whatever the housing component is. So that the housing doesn't have to, to subsidize it. Uh, and so I just want to make sure that we're going to get. Enough bu- money in the capital budget that's going to be able to cover those uh, those costs. Regardless of whether it's a standalone or whether it's going to be intermingled with the, the housing.
Director or Brent, you going to talk about the, your capital budgets process at all?
Um, again, this is new for us as well. I mean, you know, we've got a certain amount allocated for the project and that's a number that we typically. Estimate for what a standalone library um would cost. Here, the financing is something that I think we just have to sort of uh. You know, revisit on a sort of iter- iter- iteratively. So, you know, we'll develop the program, we'll see what the costs are, obviously, as, as Jill's saying. Uh, you know, th- those numbers change all the time and, you know, a lot of what we do is go back to the mayor to say we need more money or less money and. I mean, i- it's a back and forth and rarely does it ever um work out exactly as we uh designed at the very inception of the project.
Thank you, Director.
Richard, you said you um DPR already has funds allocated for this project?
Both DCPL and DPR um have some funding for this project, yes. I don't quite remember what DPR's budget was. And Brent, you?
I, I, I should know off the top of my head, it's maybe nineteen, eighteen to nineteen million dollars.
Yeah. And the library has, I believe, twenty-four, twenty-five million dollars.
That's right. Yeah, more.
Right, so, so DPR's, you know, process is, is essentially the same as DCPL, you know, we, we get a budget, we design for that budget. Sometimes, you know, with the crazy escalation that we've had, um, you know, that we go back and we're looking at. Um, does this budget really um, uh, does this really, does this budget really? Uh, do what we wanted to do as far as how this project was meant, meant to be, right? How? Does this fulfill the mission of the project? And sometimes we need a little money, so. Every year, you know, we're working on refining, refining that budget, uh, budget, sorry, five, no, five, or sorry, six-year. Uh, increments, but you know, each year, like, like right now, we're working on our twenty-four uh budget requests. So I imagine uh, as, as the director said, that we will continue to, to look at this uh moving forward. Certainly, this is open and, and transparent. We wouldn't be hiding anything from anybody. It's just uh, it's, I don't think we exactly know. Um, yeah, we know what our budget did with DPRs, I think DCPL's budget. Uh, but I think this is a little bit new to, to us at DPR as well. Um, you know, working with, with uh multiple agencies on a project like this, I think we're running, we're in a little bit of a learning curve. Uh, too, but I, I know that we'll figure this out.
Okay, John, you have question or comment?
Uh, yes, now I have two questions. Um, on the issue of, of surplus, the example of the school, I guess is a facility that is. Bacon for one reason or another. With this project. We are. Creating surplus space. If we figure that the library and the community center will take up two floors each as they do now. And we're going to have housing, that housing is going to be in the third or fourth floor or fifth floor, however we do that. So does that, does that change anything in terms of the surplus? Uh, aspect of this? And my second question is, you're talking about nineteen million for one facility and twenty-four million for the other. Those are directly related only to those functions of the community center and the library. And if we're going to have two or three flights of, e- extra flights of, 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 of space. Are those included in the, in the estimates? I mean, the, the perception is that there'll be. One or two floors at the bottom and housing on top. So I'm worried, I'm concerned about the expenses of, of the housing on top and whether that's been contemplated yet at all.
Commissioner, to your first question, it's not known how the facilities will be divided. As of right now, because we have not received responses to the RFP. So we don't know if. The first two floors. Across the entire project will be DCPL and DPR, or if they'll be in a separate. Building and they'll business, another building for housing. Those are things that will be determined when we get the responses back. And we look through that process. As to the budget question. The uh source of funds to, and this is something I've talked to Cheryl Courtney, we received her letter uh yesterday. Is uh, once a respondent uh is selected, proceeds through and is looking to secure their financing. For a, a project. The district has, uh, and the federal government have many sources of funding to support affordable housing. We obviously have the Housing Protection Trust Fund. There's many other fund, funding sources. Those are all application-based. So the respondent would submit their application. And um, there's a scoring that goes through that, so, and um. That process is one that will be uh determined as the pro- project progresses. And Commissioner Higgins, that will, that's, I think, believe directly to your question of how does the non-municipal uses get funded? If there is a gap, for example, because of affordable housing? I think I answered your question, but it may not. If I, I didn't answer your question, let me know.
Well, just, just one. If they, they could take advantage of city or federal programs or they could just provide their own capital.
Of course, the first source is their own capital.
Lisa?
Thank you.
Um, I wanted to go ask a question of, uh, going back to the beginning on the, um, I believe it was a surplus meeting. And Gil, how do you pronounce your name again? I don't want to mispronounce it.
Don't worry, you can just destroy it. People do it all the time. It's a French name, it's a French name, it's, it's Gilles.
Gilles.
It's hard, yeah.
Okay, um, I m- maybe heard you wrong. Did you say that for the surplus meeting, does that go back to the council for approval?
Both do actually. Both do, so we need, we need council resolution for surplus and a council resolution for disposition. Two separate dispositions, or it's just two separate resolutions, excuse me.
Thank you.
Yeah, and often when, and, and just as a predicate to that, to your, those processes. Many times when we have the surplus meeting. Individuals from the community would like to talk about the future of the site. And whether it be, in this case, the housing or the, the, you, for your uses of the uh configurations of the site. But really, the surplus meeting is, in this instance, will be. Do we want to allow a certain portion of this site to be used for a non-municipal use? Meaning housing, and that'll be the, the sole context of that, of that hearing.
Well, that might be very interesting with community input.
Yeah.
Yeah, I have, uh, I think three questions. Um, the first is addressed both to the, the district officials who are here tonight and to this uh commission. This is the first big project that is an outgrowth of. Or, or that the public will see uh as an outgrowth of the changes in the comprehensive plan and the small area plan. It is a major change from the last time this commission visited and the public visited this issue. And I, I asked to both these parties, my fellow commissioners and to um the district officials. How do we? How do we um put on the table? I think, I think the commission, the current commissioners are comfortable with the notion of this being a multipurpose building. Library, community center, housing. Um, that's still an issue for the community and they need to be heard on that. And we, I mean, you're going to hear this from me a million times. We need to get some, some consensus on that. If we're going to do housing elsewhere along our Connecticut Avenue, Main Street. Where in the, where in the process, uh, how in the process do we do that? Do we have meetings on our own? This surplus hearing sounds like it has some very uh distinct. Uh, narrow gauge, legal purposes to fill Giles, Gill's. I'm butchering it, I'm sorry, um, Ames, um, and I'm not sure that's an adequate form for that. So, I mean, either side of, you know, fellow commissioners or um, or uh. Uh, district officials, how do you see us handling that issue? Because if we're going to give you community input, we got to build some community consensus. The last time the community saw this, we were still talking about two buildings.
I think it really came down to the small area plan process. Which really focused our, you know, the, our collective energy around what this uh site could be used for and it. It, it found itself as a, a source that could both have a, a renewed library and, and. Public recreations facility as well as having housing on the site. So we're taking a direction from the small area plan.
Okay, so just to translate that. You see, the district sees this decision is already having been made through the smaller planning process, is that right?
Yeah, if the, the smaller planning process was, went through the office of planning, was approved by a council. That's an important document that we used for this um development of the site.
Okay, the, so um. I'd say to say to my, this is addressed to my fellow commissioners. I think we need to do some local work in making that clear to people. And getting their input, and I think that. It's just, it's doing the, the political footwork to make this. To, to give people the opportunity to understand more fully as we're now going from sort of. The kind of cosmic level of planning that we dealt with to a specific site. And I just, I mean, I raise it with you as a concern. Let me just raise two other things.
Peter, on that point, uh, I would just point out that in twenty twenty. Uh, we raised this issue in the commission, we testified before the council. And at that time, this was back when they were considering the comprehensive plan. We said, no, we've envisioned this being a unified campus. One purpose for the whole thing, that it's kind of all fit together. And uh, including housing. And we said then, even back in twenty twenty, that this should be a significant component of affordable housing as well. So we've, we've been, we've been talking about.
And let's, you know, and let's not forget, the racism task forces housing work group. Put a lot of effort in. We have a report that's been public and we just talk about um being able to put housing in the public. The only public or one of the only public spaces we have um that we can control. So we did talk about that uh through.
Okay, I'm not fighting you on this, I'm not.
No, I'm not saying you're fighting here, I'm just saying.
We got a sales job here, you know, we really, this is not what the public, that, uh.
I, I don't know who the public, who, who the public is, but. But we have had these meetings where we have talked about it, and I think what Randy is saying is we've testified, so that's public. Information and then we have through our work presented. And that is public and it's still on our website if people want to look at those reports. And then the culmination of all the work we just did during our term here through the Chibachi Small Area Plan, that is also.
Okay.
Public, so.
Let me just put out two, two other questions very quickly. Um, this to the district officials, um. Well, this ANC is right now meeting with OP. Um, discussing the zoning changes that will implement the small area plan. In every, do, do you see a similar process of ANC involvement? With the uh, putting together the RFP and then follow on from that. Um, for us in the process, or are we? Just testifying at these two hearings? Um, how do you see our involvement in it? Uh, i- i- in the design of the RFP and then the reaction to the RFP?
I think there's multiple ways. It's early on as working with the agencies now. And give your input to agencies, so when they're looking at giving input into the RFP, they have that knowledge. So they can um provide the uh direction to those who are responding to the RFP. What the district expects in the public facilities. That's the first. Uh, when we have the two public meetings we've talked about, the surplus meeting and the disposition meeting. I think most notably for the ANC is, once we have the disposition meetings and you've heard the responses from all the different. Response to the RFP is getting a, a, receiving a resolution from the ANC. That says, what are the elements you like or dislike from the varying responses? It's very helpful for us because you guys are hearing the voices from your community, understanding, you know, what elements are. You know, resonating with the, with the, you know, um, with the residents. So I think those are the, the main elements of coordination with the community and ANC. Anybody else?
Okay, one other question, and, and this is just. I've never been through a process like this, so I just don't know, right? It, it, is this the, so. This commission and you guys are, would like this site to serve a whole bunch of purposes. And given it's a limited site, that means we're going to have to go up some. And, and the fact is that the current buildings sit on a pedestal of land. Do RFPs say? As a requirement, as a, 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 a first requirement, we'll, we'll start the building at the sidewalk level and up. I don't, maybe that's like too specific. I mean, I know this is a really concrete question, but I'm just telling you, there's a, there's a story almost there. In, in, in the pedestal of land that it sits on, and to the extent that we can keep it from going way high. As compared with the buildings behind, we have an easier time making sure the public goes along with this. Is that the sort of thing that goes into an RFP or is basically the designers are kind of take it and say, maybe we'll do that, or maybe you'll, you know, something else?
It's, it's generally very expansive for any ideas. Uh, I should say, these buildings are older, so the likelihood that I'm not a structural engineer or an architect. My sense is that the buildings will be raised to a certain extent and there'll be new foundations. That we put in place, so it'll be a, a new opportunity to uh look at, you know, interaction with the buildings to the grade level. And, you know, and also when we start our process with the developers, it starts a negotiation. So those concept designs advance and the developers come back to, in this case, all three of our agencies and say. We're advancing our designs, what do you think? And if we have a problem, if it doesn't work with our uh agency's mission, for example, DCPL, if you go on a, you know. A certain element that's important to their operations. That comment will go back to, to the developer and they'll have to make that change. Otherwise, we will not approve the advancement of those de- designs. So we have essentially the user test control as the concept design advances through the permits to make sure it meets our needs.
A- absolutely, Joseph, and this is Brent with DPR again, um, a- absolutely, so we, you know, we certainly, you know, DPR has, has feedback we want to give and. And public input is, is equally as valuable, you know, we want this, we want, this is a public building, so we want public input. You know, we take that extremely seriously, so I, I, I would imagine there will be plenty of opportunities to provide. Uh, input to DPR, DCPL, uh, and, and DAP as this project goes from start to finish. This will be, this will be shaped by the community.
Okay, Jazz?
Yeah, I've got, I guess I might be two questions that grow out of the SAP process pretty much. One was that during the whole SAP process, there was a lot of concern about the look and feel of the avenue and the materials, the scale, but also just the, what's it look like? And we appreciate that you can't, you know, design by RFP. But why these questions about what goes into the RFP are, are active is one of the questions in the Q and A. But also, you know, what's, how prescriptive or what kind of elements do you end up describing? And that's why Peter's interest in what, what role do we have before it hits the street? Related to that, another issue that came up a lot and still does is parking. And adding a hundred residents or whatever number it's gonna be. And we want to continue to make the library and community center accessible and hopefully more used than currently. And so the issue of whether underground parking is a requirement or an option has huge cost implications, of course. But they'd have to get financed somehow, but they changed the project dramatically. And so that goes to my ultimate question, I guess, and that's, it's great that the three agencies are working together. But somebody has to issue the RFP and somebody has to decide. How's that happen and who, who makes decisions on these big cost items or, or when does that happen?
Well, the decision maker is the mayor. She's decides the response, so we all work for her.
I understand that, but she can decide that, right? Worried about how many parking spaces there are in the basement of the housing, I don't think so.
Right, right. And there's, there's questions there, you know, the, the city is looking at alternative ways, you know, to get cars off the streets and to have transit oriented development, so that that's a, a big, you know, looking at this site and how we can facilitate that. You know, if some developers, they, they request to have less parking on the site in total, and they go for relief and want to have less parking spaces. And that's part of what their response includes. Others will want to have multiple levels of parking below. So it really depends on what the response is, what they come in as. You know, each agency also has their independent parking needs for.
Exactly, the neighborhood has parking needs as well, so.
Exactly.
And so it's, it's, it's a public facility.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So we, we work with, you know, each of the respondents and, and determine, you know, so what, how did you get to this makeup of parking, for example? And, and we, we, we work through the process. It's a, you know, parking, transportation is a, is a big issue for all of our projects across the city. So it'll be something we work closely with you, ANC, as well as the respondent on, you know, a happy medium that, that works to make sure that it's a successful project as well as it works with the community.
So in an RFP, then, what do you say about things like parking? Does that's just an element you want to hear about or?
Correct.
There, there's one other question in the Q and A that I'll raise right now because it's relevant, and that is, let me see if I can find it here. Will the RFP include terms in the design, of design guidelines? And how will the SAP guidelines be incorporated in the zoning changes that will, that have not yet been put into, into effect? So what will, what will be in the RFP about design guidelines?
Each agency can speak directly to what their requirements will be. Director Brent, do you guys want to speak about what you'll have, elements you have in the RFP regarding your facilities?
I mean, you know, it's very generally, we demand design excellence and you've seen that all over, all over town. This maybe goes to the earlier question about the look and feel. You know, clearly, as we evaluate respondents, we are evaluating the quality of the architecture. Is it, does it respect the neighborhood? Does it complement other structures in the neighborhood, similar to what we did, for example, down the road in, in Cleveland Park? Obviously, it's a little bit easier if we're doing something standalone because we are the sole sort of arbiters or judges about what, what is, you know, quality design versus not. But in this case, we've got just multiple agencies and it's, it's a marriage, right? I mean, when you're married, you, you know, not one person doesn't call all the shots. It's a, it's a, it's a decision made of, of a number of people and that's kind of the way it's gonna be now. Certainly will be more complicated. I, you know, there's, there's no, there's no getting around that. But the ultimate benefits is, you know, will be worth it.
And thank you. And I would just add, you know, I think Director Reyes is basically everything he's saying. I, I could just copy and paste for the most part. I think it's, you know, it's all about design excellence, quality. You know, we talked a lot in our meetings about the relationship of the community center to the street and the sidewalk. I think that's, that's important for this campus. That seemed to be a, you know, a, a really integral part of the design. So I think that, that would carry through throughout the whole campus design. So things like that, I think, you know, and it will generally be in the RFP. You know, we still have questions for, for DAPED because it's a little bit new to us as well. But we will definitely ask for, you know, certain things leave requirements, the, the typical things like that. But I think monitoring for the most part will be fairly open and then we'll get to, as you will, be able to see sort of the, the concepts and to respond to those and, and take, in the concept essentially, you know, an idea on paper and be able to take those and sort of roll with them throughout the, throughout the design process. So it'll be, it'll be interesting. I'm looking forward to it.
Honey?
Thank you. I have a few questions. So one is, when you are, I mean, I, you said at the start of the conversation that you've talked already offline, you know, to try to get to know each other and this is a collaborative effort and that you each have top goals. Will you somehow share that? Because it's fall, winter, before the RFP comes out, I'm assuming there's gonna be engagement with the community and you'll share what those top goals are, I'm assuming. So that's a question for you. How does the, how does the community know the starting point before the RFP comes out, certainly with those more in-depth description? So that's one, and then maybe you'll answer that and then we go on to the next question.
The starting point is obviously the comprehensive plan, small area plan. That's why the framework for our discussion and our goals. And then each of the agencies have their operational needs for their operation of their facilities. And then from there, you know, Director Reyes is talking about design excellence. There are elements that are important for each of the agencies as they look at implementing their new facilities on site.
Right, sort of the programming and all of those sort of details, right? Did we, did we, did we come to any conclusion about Randy's initial point about, we had a survey years ago, and now, of course, we've gotten through COVID and life has changed, obviously. And, and how people regard the kind of programming might change. So are, did we decide, is this, is there going to be, should the ANC be involved in a survey? Or what, how did, what is the conclusion?
If you could help me understand, when were the survey responses?
Survey, Randy, when was that done?
Then to, it would be twenty nineteen or? I remember we did it over, over just about this time of the year because we did it over Halloween. So I think it was twenty nineteen.
Right, and, and I think that what was great about the survey, what the survey results said is that when we, when the community center selected the architect and the architect had their public meeting, they had these survey results with them. And they were saying back to us, this is what we're hearing, is that, is what we're hearing correct? And here's the design that, you know, obviously they were selected and trying to adjust for what the community wants. I, I think it's important actually to do another kind of survey because life has changed and I do think that is the public input, you know. And I, and I think we need to do that, but we need to coordinate doing that because that has to come before the RFP, because the RFP is the starting point, right? So anything after that, you're already, you're not starting off on the right foot, so to speak. So I would like for us to coordinate with you on that to make it happen. And that, of course, we would have to really send every notice out and we really need the mayor and, you know, the administration to help us because this is very difficult to get everyone involved, for them to know that their input really matters. Because we constantly hear that it's just not enough. And so we have to do a good job, I think. And as Peter said, and his sort of his questions and what Commissioner Cadwell said is that this is the first one, you know, and we want to do a good job. And we want the community to understand that everything you've said here tonight is actually gonna be acted on. So you're saying, we want community input, we want excellence, we want things to look right. All of those things I think we need to do, so that's one point. And I would like to hear from all three of you, maybe some ideas, so I can close this loop because I didn't hear that earlier on the survey and how that would work.
No, I was just gonna say, you know, the standard sort of DPR process is exactly that. I, you know, we sort of went through this previously, you know, we would certainly do our own community survey. I think what we had done previously when we started the community center product was, you know, you as an ANC had done so much, we just wanted to validate if that sort of first means that exactly what you said, that, you know, this is what we heard, is that correct? And let's move forward if that's true. I do agree that a lot, so much has changed. I, I don't see how I could heard that we would do, you know, another survey. We, we certainly have means and methods to do that and I'm happy to work with whomever to make that happen. Jules, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I apologize.
Not, not at all.
Let's find in that, that our survey was back in December two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, I thought it was earlier.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Things have definitely changed.
Let me just piggyback on what Connie's saying. I don't mean to jump the commissioners with their hands raised, but, you know, I, I wholeheartedly agree with Connie and it seems like, you know, part of the budget process always involves some of those hard costs and some portions of planning, obviously. But I think in general, the city and some agencies don't do a really good job of, you know, almost looking at the project from a communication standpoint. And how do you, going back to Commissioner Goslin's point, bring the community around? One of the things I would like to see, and Brett, you just kind of mentioned this. Your agency, you said, has a process for community engagement. It would really be nice to see a combined process. I don't know what your agency's process is for community engagement or how that differs or is the same as the other two agencies' process. So.
That's where I was going, exactly. Not just ANC and not just each one, but like really collaborate together.
One, exactly, one collaborative process. And someone leading that, and I think we, you know, we tried to talk about doing the small area plan. You know, someone leading that from a communications engagement perspective. And that might be a community survey. I'm thinking about mailers that, you know, explain not only the process but maybe simplifying it with graphics to show the timeline, introductory, you know, announcements to the community, this is what come. You know, I love robocalls, other people don't. I mean, you know, even robocalls, I mean, you know, there's so much things that we could do. There really is. But I think it's also important for the community to understand, and I just had this conversation on Barnaby Street. The ANC doesn't have the resources to do this. There's a lot of demand for our increased engagement with the community. We do not have the resources to do it. And Brent and other, you know, the other agencies participated in the call. If you guys have the budget, the people, the staff, you know, that's what we need to execute this.
This is.
The brain power and we know the community and we know, you know, how to, what elements we should incorporate. But this is a really, I think, really critical piece that we need to really think about on the front end and probably should be one of the first things that we really come together and do.
Exactly, exactly. I, yes, I, I think this is a very important piece of it to start, right? Because, you know, everyone has their processes, but this is collaborative. And I think we should have a show of collaboration and to really have a discussion of how we're gonna do that, to roll it out, to get the input so that everyone understands when they need to come in in the process. I mean, there are questions about timeline and all of that. So that would be really great if we had a visual that are, like, can give people an approximate time so they know what's happening and, and then there's no false information that gets passed around. So we can talk about that later, but I really wanted to put through the stake in the ground to say, please, let's do this right. Let's do this well, let's try to work together. And, and I think we'll all be happier if we can do that. So I have a second question, can I just?
I have a question. If you could, I, I really appreciate the comments, Chris Chiang and, or, if you could, if you could let the agencies take that information back and, and collaborate and, and really try to figure out how we can respond to that in a way rather than doing it, you know, live on a Zoom and really figure out how we can collaborate on it and get back to you, that'd be great.
Yeah, my other question has nothing to do with this. It's just one more question and then I'm done. Sorry, no, I can't, okay, bye.
Oh, I, I just want to remind commissioners, we've got a bunch of people.
Yeah, 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 okay, that's, yes.
And so I want to get to that as soon as we can.
Okay, so just a very quick question, which did not come up in this discussion, which is the distribution of the art, meaning the RFP comes out and we want the best ideas. How is that for just our community? It's publicly available, but do you do anything more? Because this is a sort of one-time shot and it seems like it is collaborative and others who've worked on libraries may, may have done the standalone. So how do you get the people interested to put the teams together in order to respond to your RFP? What process will be in place? Is it the same thing or is it something different? That's it.
No, we widely advertise the release of the RFP. We have a pre-solicitation walk of the property. We have for, for potential bidders, specifically so that teams can or individuals can team together. A lot of times what we'll do is we'll have smaller firms who are looking, who perhaps are few technical engineers will attend and they're someone that's needed by another team. So as we try to find as many possibilities for connection between the firms so they can see, you know, how they can team up the best through that pre-RFP process.
Okay, thank you so much. That's what I wanted to know.
And Connie, Brent can verify this, but when we were doing the community center, we had very high interest in, in that project. And I'm sure this project will attract very, very high interest.
Absolutely, confirmed.
And I think you were, Peter, then Peter.
My question is on the library. My wife was an accessions librarian at Bolger Shakespeare Library, also at McAllister College when we lived in Minneapolis. And then she got a library degree at CU and she was a children's librarian in the, in the DCPS at Murch. All of that was in the book world and Katie and I are still book people. But.
It's changed.
Our, our SAP and our comprehensive plan is looking at twenty years out, maybe more. What is a knowledge warehouse going to look like in twenty years? Is this, is this the knowledge warehouse? So I'm wondering if, how much, I mean, I think Cleveland Park and Towny Circle libraries came out really well. But how do you see the function of a library fifteen, twenty years from now and how that affects how we're gonna design this facility?
You know, it's, it's a question that's, you know, been posed now for twenty years about the impact of technology on libraries. And, you know, my answer is always the same, we, we build libraries for people, not for things. And if you build them, if you build the sort of inspirational spaces for learning and collaboration, they will always be relevant and always be popular. You can always grow or, or shrink the size of a collection for physical books. And by the way, I should say that, you know, physical books are stubbornly popular and, you know, we can show you some of the statistics.
Me too.
It's, it's, it's more of a one end and not either. So, so physical books still are popular. I'm not saying they'll be popular in twenty years or ten years. But if we do it right, people will always want to be together. However, the pandemic has changed things. And so we are reviewing our building program. For example, I mean, just tonight, we're meeting over Zoom. Ordinarily, this meeting would have taken place probably in a library meeting room. Maybe that meeting room doesn't have to be as big or. Maybe that meeting room doesn't have to be as big or something like that because it's not going to get as much use. We're studying that very, very closely in our existing facilities and uh, and are making some recommendations. But really flexibility is the key and frankly, you know, civic beauty is also key. People want to be in spaces that are awesome to look at, um, like the MLK Library or uh, or Cleveland Park. Or um, hopefully all of our other new facilities.
Peter?
What a great, what a great answer. I mean, Philly, uh, it was the first place I let my kids go alone. It needs to attract kids and needs to be a safe place. Look, with regard to what Lisa and Connie said about uh, public engagement, huzzah, huzzah. You know, uh, I just say, let's do it at the beginning. Let's not wait and keep playing catch up. Basically, my view as a smaller area plan is that we harangued OP all the way through the process and we got a half of a loaf. I have a, just, I want to go back to a question that has to do with, and this is just from my own information. But how you interpret, how the city interprets where we are uh, uh, on this project? What I heard you guys saying was that you think that the decision has already been made. And to make it a multi-purpose building and the framework for that is already in place. I just want to understand one thing about that. At least as I remembered it back in uh, before the pandemic, when this, when you, we were developing. The commission and the community was developing the first plan. The back of that lot is R1 zoning. Did that get changed at, or is that? Um, is the change in that automatically going to go through as a result of the comprehensive plan amendments? And if it is, have a budding uh, homeowner has been notified?
Uh, those, Peter, those have not been changed in the cop plan. The, the, the cop plan only changed the portion uh, immediately on Connecticut Avenue.
Okay.
So there's been, there's been no change in the future land use map that would permit a zoning change there.
Whoa, what would that can't be? How are we going to do this project if we can't get?
No, 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 the, the R1 behind, uh, maybe I misunderstood your question. I thought.
There's something MU3 out at the avenue, right at the avenue.
Right.
Where the parking lot is now, sort of all the way back is R1, isn't it?
No, the parking lot is not R1.
Oh, it isn't?
No, no.
I misread the maps from twenty nineteen then. Okay.
No.
All right, nevermind.
It's only the residential portion behind it that is our, our one. The parking lot is not.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's go to the questions we've got in the Q and A and there are a number of them. Uh, and I'm just going to read them and uh, see who can answer them. Jerry Mallett's ask, is the project one hundred percent certain going to be a combined effort? Uh, using a campus-like setting with a library and community center being worked on as a unified project?
It will be one RFP with both DCPL, DPR and DEMPAD. So there's a lot more to that question that there will be one RFP with the three agencies together.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, uh, Ron Eitner asked, will there be community input to the RFP? And we've talked about how there would be, but he says especially the design requirements and the mix of affordable housing.
So in terms of the, the mix of affordable housing, um, we received the letter from Cheryl Court. Can you help me, can the ANC help me understand how does that letter relate to the ANC's work?
Well.
What letter?
This is a Ward Three vision and smart growth.
It's win, win, three, right? Yeah.
Well, the, the, the commission is on record in our resolutions as saying that we want a uh, affordable housing, mixed, mixed income, affordable housing with an emphasis on uh, deeply affordable. And at least fifty percent affordable housing. That's what the commission has said.
The Cheryl Court letter on, and that, I mean, the, the, the win.
It was Jamie Butler. It was Jamie Butler's letter.
Jamie Butler, uh, Ward Three Vision and uh, Smart Growth.
A motion for smart growth.
Are, are talking about a minimum of a hundred units and a variety of other things. And that, that is a, there is, there is a constituency for that in the neighborhood and there are constituency against it. But that is not the ANC speaking there.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I mean, it's, but these are people who are going to want to have input into this and should have input. So, um, um, so.
And for those who are, don't understand what we're saying, it's on the meeting information page for this meeting on our website.
I'll post it coming.
Thank you.
Uh, I think this one from Ron Eitner has also been answered, but uh, I'll ask it again. What, what will be included in the RFP in terms of design guidelines? And how will SAP guidelines be incorporated in the zoning changes that have not been put into? I think we've answered that one. I don't think we need to talk about that again. Um, Karen Perkins says, are the specifics of surplusing different if the housing is a standalone building on the site? Versus floors on top of the building, uh, of top of used buildings?
No, no, surplus is, does not look at a design. It looks at the uses on the site.
Okay. Um. That's just a comment from, from Jeff Norman. Uh, Jerry Mallett says, three of the current seven commissioners are retiring and another is in a competitive race. So as many as four commissioners who have not been part of any of the discussions will, will come in January first. Which commission will have input into the development of the RFP? I guess the RFP is not going to be finalized until after the first of the year, right?
And I, I'm anticipating we all will have input into it.
That's the community engagement, huh?
Good answer. Uh, Ron Eitner asks, oh, using Commissioner Higgins' parking example. If the community wants extra parking over and above the agency or zoning requirements, how will the RFP let respondents know? That are, that providing the benefit would get them extra points.
Not sure how to respond to that question. Um, the, the ANC can provide and the community can provide what they would like to, to have in the RFP. You know, the, we would have to look at the responses and um, see how they, how it works from a space allocation, cost allocation. Um, and, you know, find that balance between the community needs and the functionality of the site. It's a difficult question. Parking, the, the parking question is going to come up over and over, but that'll be probably dominate some of our discussions, which is okay. Uh, we just have to find that middle ground where it, it not, it doesn't clog the streets, but it also meets the, the goals of um, the mayor to, you know, promote transatlantic development.
And also in the ANC's resolution and those public meetings for the elements of each of those uh, proposals that come in. We could certainly say.
Absolutely.
Right, that's where we could emphasize is not enough.
Absolutely.
Right, okay.
And then the next comment, next is just a comment that parking is a major concern. Uh, then there's a, an anonymous question, um, asking, hold on. Uh, what is the targeted completion date for the project? Is there, is there one at this stage?
There is not. We have to get a respondent and um, get coun, receive council approval for that uh, team. And at that point, um, generally when the council does provide authority for our disposition of the property, which in this case would start the, the clock, it's generally a two-year timeline from the council action until uh, we actually have our closing for the project. That's enough time for the design to proceed to permits. And then after that two-year period, it's whatever the construction timeline is. Um, so that could be two, three years, depending on this is a complex project that around that timeframe would make sense.
Okay, a question whether there will be any preservation of green space required. Uh, and I guess that's just something that will, will be included in the RFP when we get there, right?
But it's also part of our Chevy Chase Small Area Plan.
Right.
About that.
Small area plans, it will be important, those elements.
Um, this is just a comment, uh, hoping that there will be consideration of not necessarily putting the library next to the sidewalk. But that, of course, will come up in the design process too. A question from Ron Eitner, please clarify that when you refer to private developers, you might mean for-profit market rate. And it might mean nonprofit affordable housing developers or both.
Absolutely. Yeah, we have teams that are nonprofit as well as for-profit that respond to all of our projects.
Okay, and I think the last question is uh, from Jerry Mallett. Given the D-Dot project with Connecticut Avenue and concerns people have about parking. Can underground parking be included in the RFP for this project? And we've talked about that as well. Okay, um, commissioners, any?
I think there were, there were people's hands raised.
Yeah, we had.
To Jeff, Jeffrey Norman and Barbara Kraft and Nancy Slate. Should we elevate them?
Yeah, I can do that. And Jeff Norman is the only one I've seen that has a hand raised now.
I think they put their hands down.
Was Susan Jumper? Oops, oops, gone. Oops.
Okay, Jeff. Jeff Norman is now a panelist. Jeff?
He's muted.
Can't hear you, Jeff. Turn, mic.
Can you? We can.
Okay, well, I put, uh, first of all, I tried to put something in the chat. And then there was a message that the chat was disabled.
Yeah, I, I fixed it now.
Yeah, okay. Well, then I, I, I had a couple of question, questions. My main question was that at a certain point, the old library and the community center will be torn down. And new ones will be built, whether they're integrated with the housing or not. And I was wondering, how long would we be without any community center services? Or library services? And during that interim period, where would, where would we go? I mean, most of us are not that terribly far from the Cleveland Park Library. I mean, there are, there are other alternatives. And, but uh, I was wondering if you thought of, would there be a period of time when those services would be completely gone from that site? And you have any idea how long that would be? Um, hey, Jeffrey, this is uh, Rich from DCPL. I actually, um, I typed an answer to your question in the chat, but um, maybe I'll just read it to you if that's okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Um, so it's, it's really too early for us to, um, to tell you how we would approach interim library services. Um, in some cases, we can do um, a storefront if we find one that's near the library. For example, when we closed Cleveland Park, uh, we found a tiny storefront in Van Ness. So it's, you know, it wasn't next door. It was, um, it was up the road quite a bit. Um, in some instances, we've, uh, we work with our partners to deliver library services and um, in sort of community spaces, well, like churches or, or things like that. Um, and one thing that we always tell uh, the public is that, just to remind them that interim services are funded from the project budget. And that there is no separate project or interim services. So um, I'm, I'm not adverse to them at all. I think they're important, but there are opportunity costs. Whatever we invest in the interim um, services component of the project is something that we are not investing in the um, in the actual project itself. But it is early, uh, it's, it's too early to tell. Well, and then my other question was about the community center. The community center serves a very large portion of Ward Three. I think there's only two in Ward Three, if I'm not mistaken, the Chevy Chase Center and Guy Mason. And so if the community center itself is closed and then the building is torn down. And then there's a period at which the new building is built. What, where are community meetings and, and, and classes and so forth going to go in the interim? I think the gentleman from the library gave a very good explanation of the interim services from the library system. And that's, and that's very good. But what about the community center when there's only two in the whole ward, if I'm not mistaken?
Great question.
Right, right. That, that is a great question, um, Jeffrey. And this is Brett with DPR. Thank you for that question. So, you know, we're going through this actually right now with their therapeutic recreation center, which, which was demolished. And we're building a brand new one. So what we've done eh, with that location, we had a lot of folks that.
And where is that located?
Uh, this is actually in Ward Seven.
Oh, okay.
But it, it's a, it's a similar project in that, that building had to be demolished while we build a new one. So what we've done in, in that situation is take a, uh, as much of the programming as possible and shift it to other nearby locations. So those people that depend on those, those programs or those services are able to at least go to another, another DPR location. Uh, to, you know, to take that class or to, to get that therapy or what, whatever it might be. Um, uh, hopefully that's helpful. I would have to go and look um, at, you know, what's, what's, you know, in the vicinity around Chevy Chase to do some research on that. And we're, we're happy to work with you, the ANC and the community on, you know, the identification of which programs uh, need to continue and, and where they can continue and, and that sort of thing. Happy to work with you and, and the folks on that.
Yeah, well, I think there's only one other community center in Ward Three and that's Guy Mason. And I suppose the classes and so forth could switch to Guy Mason, assuming there's enough room.
We, I would definitely, I will definitely take a look at that. I made that note. So that's something we will definitely research. I'm, I'm sure that'll be kind of, be a topic of conversation uh, at one of our community meetings as well.
Okay. And there may be other locations.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to piggyback off of Jeffrey's point, um, great point. Thank you for bringing that up. And one of the um, programs, Brett, that I would like to put on the bubble um, for you guys to pay special attention to is the dance program, ballet. Um, they have that special floor and when they performed at Chevy Chase Day, um, the instructors there explained how rare that floor is. So I don't know if there's anywhere else for them to go. And it would be a shame to um, have them sit out, you know, because people come all over uh, from DC to attend those classes. So whatever we can do to support, you know, that ballet class and make sure they stay up and running, you know, during the renovation time would be very helpful.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll do our absolute best.
I like to jump into what Lisa said and say that the fencing um, program, you know, they are not being offered through DPR. We've heard a lot of complaints because people want to see it because private lessons are so expensive. Now it's a fancy club and it's not offered through DPR. And I think that it's a huge mistake and I think the operating hours are really difficult. Uh, Saturdays of this uh, center begins at nine and ends at one. And in the past, when DPR offered the fencing program, those programs were offered to kids from, you know, twelve on, like twelve PM on. And so we need for um, you guys to work better with us to help uh, these programs continue to thrive. And we're not sure how that decision was made. Uh, this happened last year. Randy, you want to jump in?
That's not Brett's area, so we should talk to the right person at, at DPR. Brett's not the right person.
Sure, but I just want to say, just like Lisa has, these programs are pretty important.
Right.
Yeah, going forward. Thank you.
And I'm happy to be a conduit um, to relay that information along.
Okay, um, Lisa, I will turn it back over to you. Uh, we're at the end of our eight-thirty uh, time for the meeting, so we're right on schedule. Amazing.
Um, was there anyone? I thought there was another person that had their hand raised. That was a.
I looked a minute ago and there wasn't anyone. Let me check again.
I think Barbara Kraft wrote uh, in the chat. I think, yeah.
Okay, there are no hands up.
Got it. All right. Thank you, Barbara. I saw it. You're very welcome. Um, well, thank you, guys. That was, that was a good first meeting. We had a, a lot of things that we discussed. Um, we had. Um, we have definitely a lot of work to do, um. So I'm really kind of looking forward to jumping in there and getting started on some of the issues that we talked about. Hopefully this will give also the community a little idea of how the process is gonna work. Um, particularly those two public meetings um, that go before the council. Uh, the ANC's resolution, we are gonna work really hard with the agencies to start the engagement process early on. Um, you know, I agree with Peter, hopefully we don't repeat some of the same things that happened in a small area plan. Um, but we're gonna, we're gonna do our best to make sure we engage as much as possible. Um, with that, thank you everyone for coming out. That'll conclude us for tonight, but certainly we will continue to have these discussions as we move forward. And uh, we'll get them out the best we can, we definitely will post them on the listservs, um, our Facebook, YouTube. And just to mention, if you guys do not follow us, please follow us on social media, we have Twitter, we have Facebook. We have email, so sign up and make sure you follow the ANC so you can stay in touch with what we're doing. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Randy, please send me the tape.
Yeah, don't, don't go yet, Randy, you and I, I was just so I can copy some stuff.
Good evening.
Bye, guys, thank you so much for your time.
Very much.
Thank you. You could stop the recording, Randy, if you'd like.